Good evening, and thank you for coming. We're very proud of our staff, and unfortunately, some of the staff will be leaving. And so we would just like to show a little bit of our appreciation for the staff. And I'll call you up, and if you could just line up there, and give you a big round of applause, okay? Thank you. First of all, retirees, teachers, guitarists, Linda Bruno, grade five teacher. Guitarists, Michael McGee, grade five teacher. Hugh Cole, Carol, Capa, Kapak. Kiki Muey, Deborah Marshall, social studies teacher. Welcome, Debbie's unable to be here with us this evening. Kiki Muey, Robin Mello, ESL teacher. Kiki Muey, Frank Padwana, social studies teacher. Kiki Muey, Lindsay Pinilla, Sacagawea. Mont Hope, Alfred Resendi, social studies teacher. Rockwell, Dana Simone, Bayou. One more round of applause by you, please. Thank you. No dance, no dance. Thank you. Okay, now, get into administration. Guitarists, Cynthia Sadler, elementary principal. Cynthia, thank you very much. And now, now we have the non-certified staff. Colte Andrews, Karen Andre, teacher assistant. She's unable to be here, please. Colte Andrews, Dennis Gorman, Astoria. Guitarist, Francisco Agia, Corso. Guitarist, Mary Ann Gustafson, teacher assistant. Hugh Cole, Mario Tetera, Custodi. Kiki Muey, David Suzan, Custodi. Oliver, Leontina Sariva, secretary, unable to be here. Thank you very much, thank you. Now, we have a little competition going on here. Yes, could I have the principal from Colte Andrews, please?
Teacher of the Year.
For Teacher of the Year, the Teacher of the Year.
Good evening. It is a great pleasure and confidence that the Colte Andrews School community nominates Mrs. Stacy Dunn for the 2018-2019 Bristol Warren Regional School District Teacher of the Year. Stacy truly deserves the Teacher of the Year for many reasons. Her passion, dedication, and innovative mindset are just a few that we appreciate the most. Stacy works hard to find the best strategies for all schools to learn and be successful. On a regular basis, she integrates technology into the curriculum for all students. She differentiates her instruction with the use of R.E.D.E.S workshop, Math Workshop, and Writing Workshop. She goes above and beyond to make all the combinations and modifications accessible for all of her students. She's always reflecting on her practice as a teacher and thinking of ways she can best meet the needs of all students. She worked tirelessly to complete four, if I said four, BWEF grants, and was awarded all four of them for the Colte Andrews Community Award. She spends a great deal of time planning highly engaging lessons while providing safe and welcoming environment for all of her partners. As a team player, Stacy is always willing to help out other teachers to improve their practice and grow in their profession as well. Stacy has been leading our school to learn about responsive classroom. She is helpful in making this initiative become a successful school in practice and a better place for students and staff to grow and learn. Stacy has gone above and beyond learning the ins and outs of responsive classroom. As a responsive classroom coach, she presents information to staff that is helpful ideas for accommodating students who are most, who are more of a challenge. We firmly believe that Stacy Dunn deserves Teacher of the Year for her hard work and dedication to all members of the Colte Andrews School community. Thank you, Stacy.
Guitarists, the principal here.
Mrs. Linda Bruno. Linda has been teaching in our elementary school since 1993. She is extremely hardworking and dedicated to our students and all staff members. She happily assists teachers with any questions they might have using her creativity and resourcefulness. No matter what student experiences in and out of school, Linda finds a way to reach them and provide a calm and caring environment for each student. As one of the teachers shared, she's been my work mom for eight years now, but also a great friend. She's a go-to person for all questions, both personal and work-related. She's always rational, honest, and knowledgeable. I'm so thankful that I've had the opportunity to work with Linda. I still can't believe she's retiring. She has so much juice left. She could teach for another thirty years, and students would thrive. Every time I walk into her classroom, I get a great idea, well-deserved. She has shown ongoing initiative, leadership, and dedication, not only to our school, but the district as well. She's always learning and sharing her knowledge in such an enthusiastic manner. She's a genuinely kind and caring person, and all staff members appreciate the support that she has so humbly delivered.
Hugh Cole.
Our Teacher of the Year is unable to be with us today, but I'd like to read the accolades from her peers. We are extremely proud to name Shannon Swiss for Teacher of the Year. Ms. Swiss is, to put it simply, an amazing teacher, employee, coworker, and team player. One very important thing that anyone who knows or can tell you is that she always takes the time, takes some of life's smallest tasks, and make them important teaching moments to help shape the minds and character of our students. She exhibits such good passion for her coworkers with her caring and thoughtfulness. She always takes the time to ask questions, then listens to the answers. She goes above and beyond with her concern and thoughtfulness towards her students, adjusting her teaching style to meet the individual needs of each student. She's very clear in making sure that the students understand what is expected of them as well as the rules that need to be followed while reaching these goals. She has the amazing ability to accomplish this in a manner that grasps the focus of her students. Her passion to teach just shines clearly in Room Six, even on the collaborative early days. Our school and the education of our students is better because Mrs. Swiss is part of it. Shannon is an integral part of educating and shaping the young minds of our students and getting them prepared for the future. She makes such a difference to each and every student. We need to keep her life burning strong and encourage and recognize her efforts and accomplishments. She exhibits all the best qualities of what a great teacher should be. Thank you.
Kiki Muey.
Kiki Muey Middle School would like to honor Dr. Lindsay Pinilla as Teacher of the Year. The 2019 Teacher of the Year has been a teacher to the entire school community. Those that have been fortunate enough to work with her have learned so very much from Dr. Lindsay Pinilla. Her ability to always put students first, even ahead of their own needs, serves as a lesson to all of us in how to truly address the whole child in order to help them succeed each and every day. Much of Lindsay's work involves meeting the families to communicate findings from evaluations, observations, and daily interactions with students for the purpose of developing plans to help them grow and improve. She never tracks away from a challenging conversation and always has a soothing and calming approach to helping families understand their child's needs. She's able to support families in becoming advocates for their children and teaches them how to access strategies and resources to help them. Lindsay is absolutely adored by her students. Her door is always open to support with any need, from offering a snack to a hungry student, to helping calm with dysregulated student, and getting them back into the classroom and ready to learn. Lindsay has been practicing the art of teaching social-emotional learning way before it became a buzzword in education. She is a gift for looking at the whole child. She has been a lifesaver, she has been her office, for almost all of our vulnerable learners. The lessons that she has imparted to our KMS community have left us to be more compassionate and supportive to our students and each other. Lindsay, KMS absolutely loves and endorses you. We wish you the very best as you retire from this job knowing your future endeavors.
Mont Hope.
It is my pleasure to announce Mont Hope High School Teacher of the Year, Miss Allison Lewis. Allison is an outstanding individual with an extremely strong work ethic, one which I have never seen. Her passion for learning and teaching, love and true caring for students is inspiring. Allison is one of only a few individuals I can think of who possess the qualities of an effective teacher and leader in education today. I've worked closely with Allison for the past five years and have been consistently impressed by her knowledge, compassion, and strong leadership style. Allison has had unique roles at Mont Hope High School, including phys ed and health teacher, after-school academic support program for student athletes, and past program support teacher, as well as, most recently, a Niasq try-chair. No matter what role Allison is in, she takes it on with poise, professionalism, and enthusiasm while being reflective. She takes on every challenge head-on with unwavering conviction and commitment. Allison's relationship with students is based on trust, where students feel comfortable and to know that she is there to support them in any way possible. She holds them accountable while challenging them to continuously improve. I have personally witnessed how Allison has built a strong rapport with all her students, even the most challenging. They look to her not only as their teacher, but as their mentor. Allison also recognizes the importance of building a strong culture and has been a key figure in improving and strengthening the culture of Mont Hope High School. She has organized and facilitated activities and events that have truly contributed to the improvement of the climate within our school. Allison always remains the utmost professional and key focus on what is best for students. Teachers actively seek her out for support, and she is willing to help in any way she can. Allison is a rare individual who possesses the knowledge in many areas and professionalism that helps students achieve success. She recognizes strong pedagogy, understands assessment practices and their impact on targeted groups. I have witnessed her ability to work collaboratively with teachers and administrators to support students. She gets it and understands what makes kids tick and the impact that personal connections can make. I can honestly say that Allison is among the finest and most dedicated educators I have ever worked with, who understands and embraces the challenges students face today. She is a true husky.
Rockwell.
I'm pleased to announce that the Rockwell Teacher of the Year is Mr. Joe Gallo. Joe Gallo is a twenty-two-year veteran of the Bristol Warren Regional School District. He has taught at Rockwell School for twelve years. Students every year are excited to be a part of Mr. Gallo's class. He has great insight into their academic and social-emotional learning at school. Joe is attentive to his students' individual needs, and his colleagues report he is always available to offer support and share his ideas. Each year, Joe creates, that is writes, an original play that the third, fourth, and fifth graders perform in a dinner theater-style evening along with raffles, a side auction, and musical entertainment. He spends countless hours writing, organizing, rehearsing, and meeting with parents. The students look forward to the announcement of play try of all year long. Joe does his part to energize the staff as well. He plans a festive holiday party for all each year, complete with games. He is very considerate of all his coworkers at Rockwell School, always considering how things will fit into the big picture of the school. He is a good communicator when there are issues at hand. Joe does his part to fully participate in district initiatives. He sits on the district writing committee, and he is very involved in the ongoing social studies forum. He always readily signs on with a smile for whatever is asked of him. Joe Gallo is a vital part of our Rockwell community.
Okay, no drum roll. District Teacher of the Year, Allison M. Lewis. Well, again, you're ready to go. Thank you. Now, we're going to talk about the Support Staff Person of the Year. Colte Andrews.
It is a great pleasure that we recognize Kristin Castriata. As 2018 and 2019's Support Person of the Year. Kristin is always, is a person we can always remember. She is always on time, great with children, responsible, cheerful, and always goes way beyond what's expected of her. Kristin has a perpetual smile for everyone. She's very friendly and accommodating to staff and students, and is always ready to lend a hand. She approaches all assignments with a positive attitude and helps out in a multitude of ways. Kristin has been a wonderful addition to our school community. She is super supportive, also with her teacher, flexible and ready to help out in any situation that arises. For example, a teacher asks Kristin to work her class to project bases to have an extra set of eyes on the students with a substitute. She took charge and made sure that all students were safe and accounted for. The teacher was so grateful that she was there. Kristin also jumped in to take on the classroom TA's afternoon task, and she was amazing. She's always eager to help out in any way she can. She comes in every morning with a cheerful smile, and the students always look forward to seeing her to stay. Kristin has devoted her time to learning and implementing many dimensions to help students with reading and math deficits. As a paraprofessional, Kristin is dedicated to ensuring the success of all her students. She is always willing to step in and is a true team player. She is great with the students and a joy to work with. Kristin's colleagues consider her a gem because of her unmatched dedication and commitment. This year, she has taken on the role of supporting students in reading and math. She prepares for her students and delivers the intervention with fidelity and integrity. For these reasons and so many more, we are so proud to recognize Kristin Castriata as the Colte Andrews Support Person of the Year.
Okay, guitarists.
Guitarist Schools, very pleased to have Mary Ann Gustafson as our Support Person of the Year. We nominate Mary Ann Gustafson for Guitarist School Councilman for Employee of the Year. Mary Ann has been working in the district as a teacher assistant since 1995. She understands and performs her role as a teacher assistant extremely well and also goes beyond volunteering to assist whenever she can. I appreciate Mary Ann's ability to assess situations and report any issues to me. Because of her clear and thoughtful communication, we're able to run more smoothly as a school. She's always concerned about student safety and exhibits a great deal of common sense in addressing unforeseen issues. Mary Ann works very well with all staff members and is very well-respected. She truly is an asset to our staff and deserves to be recognized for her dedication. Her professionalism is appreciated every single day. Thank you.
Hugh Cole.
It is with great pleasure that I name, no, we name, Liza, also the Support Person of the Year. Liza is truly the heart of Hugh Cole. She keeps it beating every day. And I'd like to read some of the words of her colleagues who nominated her. Liza is a miracle worker when it comes to scheduling the impossible. She's organized and able to process out independently. She cares for all of the staff at Hugh Cole School and works diligently to align resources in order to support our faculty and staff. Her candor and her wit make her a joy to work with and helps put a smile on your face. Most importantly, she is compassionate about our community and the Bristol Warren Regional School District strives dearly to promote the district's vision and mission. And I think it helps that she has a baby Jesus on her desk every day.
The show, "Wesley Line." Okay, Kiki Muey.
Kiki Muey would like to recognize the one of the women who carries hands here. I don't know where to start here, Carrie. Carrie has many responsibilities being in the main office. She starts every morning looking ASAP to filling classrooms with substitutes. While she may be stressed on the inside, she never lets it show. While she may be stressed on the inside, she never lets it show. She can even get last-minute coverage and say, "Not a problem, we'll make it happen." Carrie is often the first to be visitors coming to the building. She is always respectful and greets everyone with a smile. She has a special way to make everyone feel welcome. Due to cutting off a part-time secretary position at the middle school last year, Carrie inherited a very important job. She be tagging chrome books or reporting broken chrome books. This is a job in itself, to say the least. You name it, she does it. Signs up the chrome books in the morning, making calls with parents for bill collection, explaining the policies in chrome book repairs, and working closely with the IT department to make sure that everything is reported, faced, and handed back out. Carrie makes sure all of our yelling announcements go up on the televisions and sends those announcements out to parents in the afternoon as well. Carrie's brought her own style and swag and position and makes it look so effortlessly. Carrie loves to be involved in school functions as well. This year, her entire beautiful family participated in our lipstick battle. They got robbed, by the way, third place was not safe. Carrie is truly the heartbeat of Carrie and her family.
If I could just add just a little tidbit on Carrie. We also witnessed her get onstage and dance with her son during a, I believe it was a Mr. Mount Hope competition. I am pleased to recognize our Support Professional of the Year at Hallowell High School, Deb Young.
Deb has been a dedicated and caring paraprofessional at Hallowell High School. She has worked mostly with students with significant disabilities as a classroom teacher assistant. Deb always presents as a kind, caring, and dedicated individual to all those she encounters. She always comes to school well-prepared with a positive and energetic attitude that is truly contagious to those around her. In the classroom, Deb goes above and beyond in making sure the needs of the students in her care are met. Deb treats her students with kindness, respect, all while setting strong, consistent limits and expectations. Deb's concern for her students is evident, and she is a good advocate for them when it is needed. Deb consistently follows through with the goals and plans for students. She readily will help with providing the necessary support and accommodations for students so that they can achieve goals and access curriculum during inclusion classes. Deb is a team player when working with faculty and other professionals. She will always pitch in and help when needed. She never complains, ever, when asked to help out or change assignments. She approaches these situations with a positive attitude, always putting her best foot forward. Deb treats her coworkers with kindness and respect and is always professional in her dealing with others. For these reasons, we are thrilled to recognize Deb Young for Support Professional of the Year at Hallowell High School.
Rockwell.
I'm pleased to announce our Rockwell Support Person of the Year is Melissa White. Melissa White works in our kindergarten classroom as well as supervises lunch and recess areas. Her interactions with students have been characterized as kind, positive, and fair. Her coworkers state she is a team player who communicates well with both staff and students. Melissa is very self-motivated. If there is a problem, she takes the initiative to jump in, figure out what needs to be done, and then she does it. She is very good with students of all ages, but especially those that have a little trouble with their interpersonal interactions. She makes it clear to them that they can come and talk to her in moments of upset. If they are respectful, she will always listen carefully to their perspective. Melissa's kind, caring personality is a definite plus for both of our students and our staff at Rockwell School.
Oliver Administration.
So it is my great honor to introduce Ms. Emily Fox as Oliver Support Person of the Year. I joined the office about a little bit over a year ago and has learned her responsibilities with such speed and accuracy that she actually knows what I want now before I ask her, and that's really crazy because, you know, it's such a fast-paced, busy office, and I'm coming and going, and I can always depend on Emily. We've had a lot of changes this year, but particularly as she also took on some added responsibilities in helping to support the superintendent's office this year while there were some changes in personnel. And Emily, without hesitation, began to support not only PBS but also the superintendent's office with ease and grace. And no matter what she was asked to do, she was there to support all of us at the Oliver Building in the most efficient, effective, and happy way that she has every day, smiling and participating fully, and also assisting others in our office who are new. So Emily, thank you from the bottom of my heart in keeping us all on track. So congratulations to you, Emily.
Okay, for Support Professional of the Year. Thank you. Emily Fox. Okay, so now we're going to talk about Generational Citizens. Congratulations to the following students representing their class at Civic State for Generational Citizens and for receiving the Changemaker Award. Anna Parker Lyer. Joshua Deaton. Joshua Davis. Lucas Alana. Fabia Stoffi. And now we're going to do Sea Courage Underwater Robotics Tournament. Congratulations to the following Sea Courage Underwater Robotics Team members for their achievements at the Rhode Island Sea Courage Underwater Robotics Tournament. Carson Corey, Kirk Pitts. Anthony Langton, second place. Christopher Martin, first place. One more, one more. We would also like to recognize Jim Piver and Perry Crosswood for their time-serving as volunteers with the Sea Courage Underwater Robotics Team.
As all other non-sitting students, I would like to... I would just like to re-sent a heartfelt thank you to all of our retirees, Teachers of the Year, and Support Staff People of the Year for your years of hard work and committed love and dedication to our schools and our students. Thank you so much to all of the students honored here tonight. You are such wonderful stewards of your schools and of the community, and we cannot wait to see what you're going to do in high school and beyond. And thank you all so much for coming tonight so we can all share the glory of your team. Thank you. So I'm going to continue the meeting and ask for a revision going to executive session pursuant to opening the meeting loss 42-46-581 for the following against paid results performance and the first pass of the rules.
for the following and to the doubt performance of the Superpassive Awards. Can I ask anything? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?